It's nine o'clock, we'll go ahead and call the meetings to order. I have approval for the tentative agenda.
Go move.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thirty minutes from last March twenty, or March eighteenth.
March eighteen, twenty twenty-four, Chairman Helgivold called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at nine AM. Members present were Cluse, Rasmussen, and Helgivold. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Cluse to approve the tentative agenda. Motion carries. Minutes of the previous meeting of March eleventh, twenty twenty-four were read and approved. Approved claims for payment. An open forum, Lucinda Stone spoke about the C seventy bridge replacement. The engineer's office has a detour set up to travel on R twenty-seven or R thirty-three south to Hamilton County D twenty. Vehicles are starting to use three hundred and thirty-fifth street. And Stone is concerned about the road condition with fully loaded semi trucks and other heavy trucks or vehicles using three hundred and thirty-fifth street rather than the detour. Adam Clemens, Wright County engineer, gave an update on the secondary roads. There were nine work orders completed last week. Crews began inventory inventorying the sheds last week. Blades removed their winter equipment and started blading full miles. Trucks also removed their winter equipment and hauled dirt. The engineer's office applied for a sign replacement for the state of Iowa through the DOT and was awarded two thousand dollars. This will be available after July one, twenty twenty-four. Clemens presented Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve, an establishment of a road embargo for construction. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Cluse to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve. I will call vote, ayes, cluse, Rasmussen, and Helgivold, nays, nuns. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve duly passes and reads as follows. And there you can see the full resolution in its entirety. Cluse gave an update on Summit Carbon Solutions Pipeline. He met with Tim Whipple, attorney representing Wright County in the Summit Carbon Solutions Pipeline. They discussed putting a zoning ordinance in place with setback distances and what that distance could be. It was recommended to look at the navigator testimony with the I U B and what their case looks like and their dispersion. Cluse has been passing along all documentation in regards to the pipeline to the planning and zoning coordinator. On Thursday, there was, there were filings made about the additional lines potentially connecting to the original pipeline and connecting fourteen additional poet and valero plans. This, the, those motions were telling the I U B to join the pipeline into one and not hold an additional fourteen hearings. Robert Watts was concerned about the size of the pipe changing from the original plan with adding and connecting plants. Cluse mentioned that was specifically discussed in the Farm Bureau filing. Betty Ella spoke on the easements that individuals have signed and filed at the recorder's office and some have indicated in their easements not to exceed sixteen inches. If the pipeline will need to, to increase the size of the lines, the easements will need to change. Jeremy Abis, planning and zoning coordinator, gave an update on the March fourteenth meeting. There were two members from Summit present via Zoom and had a good discussion with the citizens from the public. Abis is planning for another meeting with the Planning and Zoning Board in April. At that time, there will be more discussion about an ordinance. In addition to their meeting on March fourteenth, there was discussion about an ammonia plant being built west of Prestige on eight acre acre parcel of land, going from agriculture classification to commercial classification. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmussen adjourned the meeting. Motion carries.
Are you gonna? Minutes. Now, they're standing to prove this right. Open forum for the public. Anybody here or on Zoom wish to address the board? Okay, now we'll move on. Brittany?
Yes.
And your last name is Howenson?
Yeah, Howenson.
Howenson, okay, sorry about that. And you're gonna be resting courtyard use for family night and fun night on June seventh?
Yes, and then again on Saturday for festival.
Okay, and then you've talked to Andy or grounds and he gave you the blessing?
Yes.
Okay.
That's your main person.
Yeah. I started with.
There you go, that's, that's good. Any other questions, gentlemen?
No.
I think it's a great event.
Yes, absolutely.
I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Wait a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries. You're set.
Thank you.
Save the grass.
I'll try. If not, I'll stick Jesse on it.
There you go, there you go.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Jeremy, you wanna go ahead and pop down to yours, cause Ed had another nine fifteen time event?
Yeah, so before you guys, I think you all have a copy of proposed ordinance sixty-seven, which is an amendment to zoning ordinance sixty-four. This is in relationship to the rezoning of the Talus Renewable Screen Ammonia Facility, Westside Prestige. Last week I came and gave you a report from the Board of Commission that they do recommend this movement, so therefore put it on your guys' agenda today. We have discussed a little bit about the legal classification part of it, or the parcel, some changes on that. They've actually downsized the request from the eight point zero six acres to six point six. So I will have a updated description for that, for the actual signatures if you do go forward and decide to accept that recommendation.
I would make a motion to pass the ordinance number sixty-seven, an amendment to ordinance sixty-four zoning ordinance for the unincorporated portion of Wright County. And that legal description will be for six point six acres and point two three acres of which is road right of way.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Rick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Wonderful, good work on that. Also, thanks to-
Ordinance is a first reading.
Oh, see, well, firstly, so.
Yeah, what is the process for that? I put the dates in there for you, so.
Three readings.
Today, April first and then April eighth.
Okay. No, and also appreciate Daryl Stevens Carlisle for bringing this also to economic development, so things work.
That's all we got.
Okay.
For the public, do you have a little bit what Talus does? Do you, what they, what they do?
Yeah, I can get you the pamphlet from.
Essentially, they make green ammonia, is my understanding. The idea is to produce one truckload of green ammonia. Green ammonia is typically used for, as a fertilizer.
Yeah, and John is, John's here from Snyder.
Is that an accurate description or not?
Um, yeah, I think the, the ingredients would be electricity, air from just air from the environment and then water. There'll be a series of, well, different shipping containers, they'll be on site and I don't know a lot of the science behind it, but it's a, you can imagine it's kind of like that, like that chemistry set that you buy your kids for Christmas on steroids. They'll be all self-contained, unmanned, and then there'll be a regular anhydrous ammonia, like a storage tank that you see at the homes. There will be one of those to start on site and then there'll be additional second one.
They partnered with Landis, is it?
Okay.
The Texas, what they did.
Right.
My understanding is that Landis has contracted to purchase all of the product that is made at this particular site.
Right.
So, and what's it used for, Dean?
Uh, it's anhydrous ammonia, so it's a form of nitrogen fertilizer, but it's a green form because it uses electricity and water and, and the air that is here.
See Belmont Independent had a picture of a example of.
Where a normal production of anhydrous ammonia produces a large amount of CO2, so.
And this would be a lower cost for local farmers as well.
So, it's a good test spot for it.
Yeah.
They were out there surveying the other day, it was up with the industrial park, they were surveying the land, so it's moving, definitely moving forward.
And this would be the technically the first, they're building one that's a one ton, which is obviously smaller, this is a ten ton down at Boone, downtown by the Farm Progress Show on a Landis Cooperative site. I think this would be the first production, for true production for, for you. So obviously, ten tons is not, ten ton of dig is not going to replace all, all of what is used across the, the corn level. But it's kind of a startup, something called big technology.
Yeah, and it works out great for Prairie Energy because they do use a lot of power and that we've got abundance of power there with, when they, they built the substation for Prestige, so.
Okay.
It works out good. Right, Jeremy, thank you and thank your board for the work on that, too.
Yeah.
Okay, Angela. Update on Child Abuse Prevention Month.
So April is Child Abuse Prevention Month and we, building families and parent connection are here and we're helping that you help us build hopeful futures for families and children in Wright County. We, if I want, it's a lot cheaper to raise healthy kids and fix broken adults, you know, and we at Wright County unfortunately frequently has, since I've done this job, has higher rates of child abuse. We are getting better, but and also they kind of changed with COVID and everything is really difficult to get the most accurate rates. But we are number forty-five on the ninety-nine counties of total childhood abuse birth. And so what we are requesting is that, that the county would like the courthouse blue in honor of Child Abuse Prevention Month and that we have a proclamation that if you have the copy, Rick, I'll-
I do not have it with my box, no.
Okay, so I, I will read it.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, you guys. Go ahead and read it and I will get, I got copies, okay?
Do you need to read it, Rachel?
No, I've got it.
Big enough.
Okay, so April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas children are nation's most vulnerable resources as well as our nation's most valuable resources, helping shape the future of Iowa. And whereas positive childhood experiences, the loving caregivers, safe and stable and nurturing relationships can help mitigate trauma and the negative impacts of adverse childhood experiences to promote the social, emotional, and developmental development of children. And whereas childhood trauma can have a long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects throughout an individual's lifetime and impact future, future generations of the family. And whereas childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, is a serious problem affecting every community in the United States and finding solutions requires input and actions from everyone. And whereas children who live in families with access to concrete economic and social supports are less likely to experience abuse and neglect. And whereas prevention is possible because of the partnership created between families, prevention advocates, child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and local, state, and national governments. And whereas we acknowledge that in order to solve the public health issues of abuse and neglect, we must work together to change hearts and mindsets through storytelling and sharing, center the needs of families, break down biases and barriers, and inspire action from expected and unexpected partners in prevention. And whereas we are committed to advancing equitable, responsive, and effective systems that ensure all children and families are healthy and thriving. And whereas we recognize the need to prioritize kids and invest in more prevention initiatives like home visiting, family strengthening policies, economic supports, and community-based child abuse prevention programs at the national, state, and local levels. And now for, therefore, we, the Wright County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in Wright County and urge all citizens to recognize this month by building a narrative of hope for children and families throughout collaboration and the creation of an ecosystem of primary prevention that does not currently exist in this country.
Well said.
I would make a motion that we recognize April as the child abuse prevention law and light the clock tower with blue light.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Until I need to get blue lights, if you didn't have them already, but we'll get it lit up on the first.
Thank you, and then Betty has a proclamation.
Yeah, but we'll sign that, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Tony. Sleuth bills today.
Okay, so this year we had three hundred and three Slubel applications. There were ten that were removed. This is something, we sent Colleen the empty blank form with all the names and parcel numbers and she gets ahold of the, the taxpayers, gets their signature, she does all the work behind it, sends it back to us to, for you guys to allow or disallow. There were ten this year, there normally is only one or two. She said she'd contact, tried to contact them multiple times to get the forms back and didn't, so.
And you calling trees of the N R C S office.
I believe our county has a maximum of three thousand acres and we are at twenty-eight oh four forty-eight. So we still have a little bit of room. And when you get to three thousand, you can either cap it or do increments to allow more.
You said we're at two thousand eight oh four?
Yep.
Okay. In three hundred and three applications.
And there's a big list to follow them on the back. I think that's about it.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve the Sluville applications as presented with the recommendation, to go with the recommendation of the county supervisor.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
So we can always stamp them for you.
Right here, no, I-
Yep, if you just sign.
Right there, okay, I'll go through them after the meeting.
Did you guys, was there a bunch of drainage invoices today that you signed for?
One for nine hundred dollars. And then, of course, there was, in the regular bills, there was a bunch from Snyder and Associates for work done.
Is that, I'm wondering if we shouldn't have held off on that, cause we are one hundred and thirty-two percent now.
It was, if I remember correctly, sixteen thousand or-
Yeah.
Or eighteen thousand.
Yeah, cause that just threw you over on your percentage.
Okay, okay.
Um.
May I pull those in?
Probably should until, cause I know that Amanda's working, she's gone again today, but I know she's working on budget amendments and.
Because that's paid by them.
It's still, it's still a budgetary amount and we have to, and budget amendment.
We're just a pass-through, right?
Correct, correct, yes.
Okay.
But we still.
Have to remain within the, you wanna just do your motion, just to pull them or you wanna just do?
Yeah. I just took the claims up to.
I've got it, I've got it, yeah. So. Under Department zero nine on our bills, I would make a motion to pull there are three plane numbers, thirty-five, two ninety-four, thirty-five, two ninety-five, thirty-five, two ninety-six submitted by Snyder and Associates.
This is Betty.
Submitted by Snyder and Associates totaling sixteen thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-one cents. As that would
Put this over.
Put us over our budget amount, budgeted amount, even though this is a pass-through. Type I.
I would second that.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay.
So should I go out and get that form and list those?
I took it upstairs to Joan.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'll have to, and I just called Dad to tell her, to tell Joan not to pay those.
Okay.
Okay.
And then next week you can approve them because we will have the amendments done that month, so.
Perfect. Good catch, Ben.
Okay. I assume that because it was a pass-through thing that it.
No, it's still, it's still budgetary, so, okay.
Okay.
Oh, just a second, I, let me get caught up on here.
You're good.
Okay, so I got it. All right.
You're good, okay.
I think so.
Item ten, Adam, secondary roads update.
Last week, the blades worked on one hundred ninetieth street east of Page Avenue, correct? All of it was east of Page. I think when we cut down those back slopes.
Oh, yes.
Yep, so we cut down some back slopes, worked with Eric, areas that were snow traps. So we cut those back slopes down to make sure we could benefit from that. They also did some blading and they're also out there working with the shoulder reclaimers some more, pulling that shoulder in and making sure that we have good cross slopes. Trucks started to haul, started to haul the granite program. They worked on the granite or engineer miles. They hauled two thousand tons last week. Work orders were completed seventeen, seven of those were the drainage district plates that we closed out. We did have two winter weather responses last week, three twenty-two and three twenty-four, not two twenty-four. Three twenty-two went out at six thirty in the morning, response to snow and ice. And then three twenty-four also on the, yesterday, Sunday, out at nine thirty, finished at two, so.
It seemed down heavy for a while yesterday.
It did, yes, it did. Yep, last, and what was that, on three twenty-two on Friday, I got up at four forty-five and there was really nothing going on, got in the shower, came out.
What?
Why not? Jake was out there and I called him at five thirty, I'm like, hey, what's going on? He said, yeah, uh, it started coming down hard, so, but, yep.
At least it melted.
Hopefully no more.
Exactly, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Old business, new business, gentlemen, big on meetings.
I had a lot of attention Friday, and I've got Edno coming up this coming Tuesday.
I have, on Wednesday, I have a drainage district association meeting in Palo Alto County, so in, we traveling to Emmitsburg that day, and then at four o'clock, Midas over in Fort Dodge. And I will miss the C F R meeting, I've already informed them that I would not be there.
Okay.
I have a conflicting meeting.
I had several meetings last week, I'll go down, EMS, we had our advisory meeting, that went real good. Our response vehicle is not full-time, but that is getting better and better as, as the progress goes. The biggest thing is to getting paramedics on staff, but that's kind of finally meshing. We're still doing classes. Our biggest thing is getting employees, you know, we can provide them all the education, we can give them all the tools, but you don't have the people that, that, that makes it tough, but we've got everything except that, so that's getting better. And we're looking at doing a possible shadowing with the paramedics and the E M Ts so they can actually see the, the ER, how it works and stuff like that, so they just, it gets a better blend between them and the hospital, so we're working with, especially hospitals, if you're not the best way to do that. So that was a, a good, a good thing. Landfill, the grinder, which is an expensive purchase, but we've had it for about three months now. We're right at about a two and a half to three to one. So for every three trucks we were taking up there, we're down to between one and one and a half trucks, because it saves so much in the packing, so we're saving wear and tear on tires, vehicle diesel, so it's definitely showing a savings now.
Does only construction material go through it or everything?
Everything gets ground and put in there, so we have complete packed down trucks, we're not, before, you know, you, you loaded with there and, and you'd have air pockets and things like that. You're gonna get eight or nine tons where you could have more this way. It's like this full, so we've seen that type of, we're hoping to be around that two and a half to one.
Do they, do you ever put something like that inside of a building?
It is, it, I believe it is inside, yeah, I'm gonna go actually tomorrow, eight o'clock, I'm gonna go, I've not seen it work yet, so I'm gonna go out and check it out. Let me take a video of it and bring it back to you guys, I'm kind of curious, yeah, it works, but expensive purchase, but I think over the long term, you know, it'll, it'll, it'll be a definite good asset for that.
Did you get mentioned, did you have a meeting with them? Did you mention the lease?
Yeah, and we're working with the lease on that, they're, they know that's coming forward. It's just a matter of getting Eric to finalize it, finalize it, that's what we're working on now, but they're aware of it, so it'll just be more procedural, lower rap on that.
And that's a three-year, right?
Yes, three-year at this point, yep. Economic Development, we met with potential industry for the industrial park and that was pretty much most of the day. We had them meet with two other Wright County companies that they would be working with on that, that went well. Had dinner with them in the evening time, so everything is progressing, progressing good, we're still in the early stages, but through that whole day, there was nothing to say, I don't think it is gonna work, so we'll keep you posted on that. Belmont Awards function, I was at that, at Cattlemen's, that was probably a hundred, hundred and twenty people there, different awards given out. A great event, good food, and just a lot of, a lot of cool people and things what they're doing in Belmont, so.
Where was that held at?
Cattlemen's. At the golf course.
And that's?
Their Belmont.
Closing, right?
They, I've heard it is closing, but I'm not sure if someone could take it over or not, I'm not really, I don't know the, the details on that. But definitely a great event. And then another, we had public health and a couple of things I want to touch base with on public health that's happening is we had our, Roxanne is our, is our regional person that kind of comes to our meetings once in a while and she was there. And we have all the talk about regionalization of public health. Well, it's not gonna regionalize this year, because they've got their plate full. Next year is when we're gonna be on the, the microscope. And that is gonna be the year where we're gonna have to advocate that, you know what, if you regionalize it, we still need to have local control on things like that, so next year will be a a, a, a true year in, in making sure that we're heard on that. Nothing this year, but next year as they start winding down on all of these things, it'll be an issue. When we were at the EMS meeting, we were talking, Amy McDaniel's brought up that hospitals always wanted to do home care, skilled, skilled, skilled home care with nursing. And when we decertified years ago, we really wanted them to take it over, but because of the licensing that we had and the hospital taking over, it did not mesh, it did not work. And they wanted to go, and they were looking at going through a program make sure I've got it right here. It's the, oh, rural health. On a rural health program, they can do skilled nursing care at home. So they filled out an application back in two thousand twenty-one. This also was when COVID happened. At that time, in two thousand twenty-one, they granted a waiver, so you didn't have to have that license, so they could have provided that, that skilled care in the homes. The hospitals decided not to do that under the waiver, because as soon as the waiver goes away, you have to be licensed. And if they weren't approved for that license, then they would have to shut down also, and they didn't, they didn't want to do that. So when I was talking to Amy, we found out it was kind of just, it was just stalled. So I talked to Steve the next day, went and had a meeting with Steve Sineman, I said, you know, can we aid you with this at all? And we got Amy on the phone and she says, yeah, if you can help us try to work this through the maze of where it's at, that'd be great. So we went back to Sandy's office and started making the phone calls and we got ahold of John Osborne with the DHS, who is the gatekeeper at the DHS that has that file. And it had been set down, but because the vouchers, they weren't, they weren't issuing anything, so it just kind of stayed there in, in limbo. So now it's there, it's been resubmitted as of what, last week? So, and that's down to Kansas City at CMS and they're the gatekeepers of Medicare and Medicaid, so that's, that's the spot that will grant them that license. So we're really hoping now that we actually have a person that, that we can move on this thing, and that would help where we bring skilled nursing care, not provided by the county, but provided by the- skilled nursing care, not provided by the county, but provided by the hospital to the Belmont, you know, it was just
Iowa special.
Iowa special hospital, which we wanted to do originally, but they couldn't do it under that format that we had, they had to have it under this format, this format provides better reimbursements. So it works out good. Now, there also is a home care aid agency that is looking to come in, and what Steve asked us to do is to coordinate a meeting with the hospital and this home care agency, maybe work together as this thing develops. So we we've had a lot of progress, it was slow going, but we had, I would say, tremendous amount of progress last week, wouldn't you Sandy?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, you know, nothing promised, but, you know, we haven't forgot about it, but, you know, um, there's uh, there's light at the end of the tunnel on this, so. You have anything else to add on that, Sandy? I mean, it's pretty.
Well, we sent in, yeah, you're exactly right, in twenty twenty-one a letter of support, because part of public health um essential services is always to monitor what the public needs, you know, working at population base. We saw that maybe there was a a gap, especially eastern side, that there just wasn't, you know, the agencies that covered that as well, so we sent that letter of support um for the hospital, got in kind of contact with the proper people, again at the state level, which they've had some changes in people, COVID was there, I get why the hospital didn't start it up, because you can't start it and then stop it, because they were not guaranteeing grandfather any through. So meantime, they kept pushing no, just grant the waiver, follow the process, they kept saying no, because you don't have to right now, well, eventually you're gonna have to. So, yeah, it's been, was since twenty twenty-one, when we thought this could be done better. Um, a lot of local public health are are going through some growing pains because the service system grant that they give, they no longer allow that to be used for home care and skilled nursing, it is more population-based public health only, so that over the last three years has been so slowly carved out, causing a, you know, deficit in um, public health that are providing home care, because that was never the purpose of that money to be put over into the home care portion of it, so.
They're they're being more tight on that money and not allowing it. And and that's the thing is is, you know, it was brought back in in the nineties as a revenue source for public health to bring dollars in. But the true aspect of public health is not a providing individual services, we're a facilitator of services to the public. But not a, not a, we don't do skilled individual services to the public. And that was kind of where it kind of got misdirected over the years, thinking that that was public health, when it truly was not a basic fundamental part of of public health. So, you know, we're working through those things, I think with the reorganization that's coming, it's gonna be real interesting with some of these public health that still have that. And the other thing is when you, the Medicare and Medicaid is, if you have a hip surgery, you get a pool of dollars. And that pool of dollars is the money that is there to help you with, you know, home care, skilled care, rehab, things like that. And what was happening is those dollars became less and a lot of that was eaten up by your physical therapy and subcontractors, so at the end of the day, there was no dollars left for those things, and that's where we had such a deficit. So if this is then controlled more on the hospital side or be able to build different.
Staff, and they're able to, you know, they're able to manage it better because they have the staff.
Yeah, they have all of them.
They have all, yeah, they have all the pieces versus, we just had a couple there, it just, it just, you know, as as times change, it just, it became harder and harder to manage that with, especially when like.
We had the roller skid, they had the key, they need to have the whole thing
Yep.
to to follow through, because now, that's another thing that's kind of the buzz around Iowa is because those costs have gone up that if you are not a hospital base, it is becoming harder and harder, because you're having to pay more and more for the services that those individuals need, like their therapies, that they need to have their therapies and it's an essential part, probably more so than that skill verse being in there, the therapies are more more important.
And it's harder and harder now to, for for the counties that have nurses, you're into hiring nurses, because a public health nurse isn't just a nurse you can hire right out of the uh after they graduate, they've got to have a little bit of skill, because they're they're ground zero every day. So, but anyway, but things, things are progressing there, it was a uh interesting week on that front, so. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I have some new business.
I have one more thing, I've been dealing with uh the wells down at the agribusiness park. They had some water issues up at the end of the town mine, some pressure relief belt got corroded and he's gonna have to, he's supposed to get a hold of Betty on the pricing, when we can get it, get that fixed.
And who are you working, he will do the repair or is that?
He's gonna do, he can do the repair, he's gotta find the new pressure relief belt that's corroded and it's been causing water issues at uh, essence.
And Tom is also involved with our meeting with the businesses out there too, so he's been here on on from day one with a new business.
That's one I do like about him, I called him Saturday afternoon late and I found out they had issues.
Yep.
And he
Was on it right away.
Yes, he, he always answers my calls, and if he doesn't answer, he calls me right back.
He's definitely, he's, he's knowledgeable, he's on it, I was really impressed how he handled himself with the meetings.
And and with all the meetings, he has not, um, his amount is one thousand two hundred dollars a month, uh is what we've paid him, and he has not ever charged us for any additional meetings or anything like that, so.
Or work.
Very nice, yep.
Cause like he was out there Saturday and I think yesterday as well.
So, because I have him for an hour and a half, two hours at that meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So that's uh, he's a good, he's a good employee.
Very good employer.
Yeah.
You got something, Ben?
Yeah, I'm done.
Yes.
Okay, um, April first is, uh, next week, the letters did go out for the tax, um, tax levy notices did go out.
I received mine, what a confusing.
Yeah, I received mine.
I received eleven.
Yeah.
I won't get one.
That, that's the worst idea that our
And it's not, and it's not an easy read.
No.
It's not an easy read, I'm disappointed um between uh working with the uh software company and the mailing company. I was trying to get commas, you know, for like seven hundred eighty-two million comma three hundred seventy-two thousand comma forty-two dollars. Um, solutions, our software company said that it was the Department of Management, and Department Management said that it's
Somebody else's fault.
Yeah, so then I looked at, um, I, we got tax statements from Franklin County, and they are also the same software as we are. And then their mailing company must have changed it and put dashes on the phone numbers and commas in there. And so mine from Franklin County looks way different than ours for Wright County, same software. It's the most, it was the most frustrating.
Waste of money.
And it was a Friday at four o'clock, we were able to pull the file, it was actually then the Department of Management sent us a letter saying, wait, we found an error. So then we had to wait and it was almost quarter to five on Friday, and then once we got it pulled, then we had to do, start working with the mailing company, so then I worked all day Saturday, not all day, but in and out, I came in and out on Saturday while working with the mailing company. Anyway, through all of that, there is a public hearing, April first, um, at nine o'clock. And there will be no action taken, but um so the agenda is going to be um a motion to receive and place on file the proof of publication of the notice of the public hearing as published. Um, and then you're gonna open the hearing and then you're gonna hear comments by the Board of Supervisors, and then you'll have comments and discussion from those people that, citizens that have come.
From the public.
From the public comments. And then you'll adjourn, there won't be any action or anything, you know, is comments are being made because you don't know what their comments are gonna be, so there won't be any action taken during that public.
So we open our comments, public comments, we close.
Done.
Done.
And then uh, so that starts at nine o'clock, our Board of Supervisors, normal Board of Supervisors meeting, then we'll start
Nine thirty.
At nine thirty, okay. All right, okay.
Okay, so that's what next week, Monday, will look like, this is all brand new, so.
And those two can't be combined, that's why we're doing the two separate meetings.
Separate agendas, separate meetings, separate everything.
And on the agenda you set up for supervisors, you let them know that it's gonna be a nine thirty start versus a nine.
Correct, yes.
And then we'll send out a separate agenda for this public hearing meeting, okay, so we'll get two, two agendas, okay. Okay. Anything else before the board? Motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned, thank you.